Welcome, everybody, to the Village Board Meeting for June 27th. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody, please stand for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence for armed forces serving throughout the world.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I must apologize that the AC is not working in this part of the building. We need a part, and it probably won't be rectified until after the 4th of July weekend. Unfortunately, the part should be here in a couple of days, but I really don't see him doing much work next week, so hopefully by the following week, he'll be up and running for the Planning Board and ZVA meetings, and then our meeting. Anyway, may I have a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting held June 13, 2019?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. I should make notice that we're missing two board members tonight. They do have family issues tonight that they had to take care of, so I just wanted to note that. Dez, could you please read abstract number two?
Abstract number two contains vouchers 190072 through 190217, and totals $501,233.24.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to approve abstract number two?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Old business, auction results. Dez, can you please read the bids?
The auction closed yesterday, and the following were the high bids received for the 2003 rescue truck, $52,000, pending inspection of the truck, and for the 1998 Cascade System, $4,600. This is the second time both items were put out to auction.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the auction results for the approval of the sale of the items as listed?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business, resolution to purchase of property for the Highway Administration and off-season storage. Dez, wait, could you please read the resolution?
Whereas the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees wishes to purchase a parcel of real property located at 19 Adams Street, Highland Mills, New York, Woodbury Tax Map Section 220, Block 2, Lot 15.1, using surplus funds. And whereas the seller, Osweiler Brothers Equipment, Inc., has provided the village with a real estate contract of sale with the purchase price of $250,000, which the special real estate attorney for the village, Gary Goldstein, has reviewed. And whereas the Board of Trustees finds that the purchase of 19 Adams Street is in the best interest of the village and wishes to authorize the mayor to execute the contract. And now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with Osweiler Brothers Equipment, Inc. for the purchase of 19 Adams Street, and to execute such other necessary documents as may be required to complete the purchase.
Thank you. Motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? No discussion?
No discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll do it before I leave.
Okay. The County of Orange will be undertaking a covert rehabilitation project on County Route 44 between the intersections of Jones and Regina. A notification was received from the Orange County Legislature of their intent to assume lead agency status for the environmental review required by Seeker. So I'm going to ask for a motion to authorize the village clerk to respond to the notice on behalf of the village board that they consent to Orange County Legislature, serving as the lead agency for the covert project on County Route 44.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that basically concludes our business for this evening. So, at this point, we'll go off public comment. Anybody in the second row? Oh, I forgot, I got a row back there, too.
The mic is on.
Oh, thank goodness, thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, Robin Kraus, Highland Mills. Um, a couple of things, actually. Can you, and I fully support the, thank you, um, a couple of things, I fully support the purchase of the Osweiler Building, but in terms of storage, can you clarify, are you talking equipment, or would it also be, um, chemicals, you know, solvents, equipment only?
Right.
Okay, only, and it would be fine, I'm sure it would be cared for properly and whatnot, but just curious about it, because it is a residential area as well, so, well, thank you for that.
It'd be off-season equipment being stored there.
Okay.
So in other words, during the winter...
Plows in the summer, and...
No, not the actual plows, but the, uh, the big snow blower we have and things like that, that they're not using during the summer months would be stored there, and vice versa during the, during the summer, some of the winter stuff, they store there, or vice versa.
Because they're currently stored outside.
Yes, because they're currently stored outside.
Yeah, okay, well, that makes perfect sense, of course. Anyway, so thank you for that. But I must say that, and, you know, not, I'm just looking for clarification, to say the least, I was horrified at reading the newspaper, the headline being "A New Life for Polluted Site." I'm sure you've all heard or read about the proposed VLTs on the parasite. I don't know how much history you guys have, hopefully you'll do some research between now and when the, hopefully the process begins at the municipal level, as it was stated in the paper. I am appalled that this has been fast-tracked the way it is, again, not laying blame on you, but I would like to know, were you consulted at all before it hit the newspapers? Not you collectively, I mean, I'm not pointing at anyone in particular.
Technically, no, we weren't consulted. This decision was made prior to even, you know, being made aware of the situation. Nobody came to us and asked us, would we be interested in something like this? There were a couple of things, well, there's quite a few things that bother me about the whole project. Number one, it was kind of done in secrecy, which I kind of feel if, you know, for such a great thing, what was, why would they hide it, you know? I also feel that some of the incentives that we're getting, the $1.2 million to be split between four municipalities, I think that's really a slap in the face. I think that's really not significant in any way. I also feel the other thing, oh, they're gonna, they're gonna clean up the property. Well, they were supposed to clean up that property years ago anyway, so I'm not sure why the DEC did not follow through on that, because there was a fund put aside, I believe it's around $13 million, and, you know, that $13 million would have went a lot further back then than it's gonna go today, so I think the DEC dropped the ball. The other thing is that they're gonna pay their property taxes, well, they do pay property taxes, the assessment's really, it's still assessed, it was just reduced, but we all pay our taxes, our property taxes, so I don't, I don't really see that as being like, wow, look at all the stuff they're giving us, you know? So I don't understand now, they talk about 400 jobs, well, listen, I've been to the Racino up in Monticello once, and they don't have 400 people working up there, and I don't think it's the type of industry we really want in Woodbury for a few reasons. Number one, the gaming industry is in a decline. I mean, when, when they offered us Caesars of New York, we had a shot at that. I was in favor of that, because the rewards are gonna be great, and I felt with a name like Caesars, New York, it would have been a flourishing operation, and it would have been, you know, high-end gambling, high-end restaurants, high-end entertainment, you know, it wasn't gonna be like a glorified OTB, which is basically what we're getting, it's a difference of night and day.
Feeling, yeah.
So, I have a lot of concern about it, because what, I mean, I don't know why Woodbury has to bail out, you know, World Resorts, that's kind of the way I'm looking at it, and why is Monticello getting a piece of it, it couldn't make it up there, so why do we, I mean, there's a lot of things about this whole deal, and that's only the little bit I know, I'm sure there's a lot more I don't know, and, you know, I really resent the fact that, you know, they didn't come down and, and, you know, maybe come to a board meeting and talk to residents, or have, you know, like, a public meeting, you know, to say, this is what we're thinking of doing. I mean, you know, you know what I'd like to see, come there like a soundstage, something that, you know, you can make movies and stuff like that, and it would be a good industry for Orange County, because there's a lot of production going on in Orange County. That would be something to be proud of, but I'm not really sure about this, you know, video gaming, I'm not happy about it all, I think it's a big mistake.
Yeah, well, thank you for that.
But other than that...
Yes, I mean, feel free, keep, you know, keep sharing, no, no, seriously. My, my primary concern is, is the parasite, again, we were very involved in the, you know, in the 90s certainly, with, and the potential, you know, for an environmental nightmare if not done properly, and that's my concern. I would want, if at all, the, our village board to do whatever you can to either stop this fast track, slow it down, whatever, there are so many unanswered questions, I mean, I and several others are in the process of doing some research in terms of where that $12 million money went, is it gone, where is it, who has it, what DEC, you know, representative is handling this? I've heard there's, there's multiple turnovers since, so, you know, just, just a whole host, I don't want to monopolize the time, but a whole host of so many unanswered questions, and, and anything that the village board can do to at least put a stop on it, to say, hey, we've got to answer these questions, you know, basically.
Well, yeah, I just want to add to that, and...
Not opposed to the cleanup, if it's done properly.
Well, one of the things I found concerning that I read in the paper, where they're gonna relocate some of the contaminant on the property, I'm like, you know, that, that's, do they think we're all that stupid? I mean, if, you know, anyway, there's just so many problems with it, and, I don't know, but I know Tim has one to add to that.
I have a couple of comments with regard to that also. I heard from the Senator with regard to this the day it passed, and a couple of weeks before that, in a 10-minute conversation, asking for support with this program, with this, excuse me, with this development. And I didn't have enough information then, and quite frankly, I still don't have enough information, but I can tell you that I don't think this fits within the character of the neighborhood, you know, we just passed a hotel overlay district just a couple of weeks ago, and that is, is within the character of what we're trying to do on that end of town. This just doesn't seem to fit. But, but putting that aside for a second, this was passed by the state legislature, the Senate and the Assembly, and it's my understanding it was already signed by the governor. We don't have any input into the state legislative process, but moreover, when, when, if and when an application comes before our municipalities combined, us, the Town of Woodbury and the Village of Harriman, although the Town of Woodbury really wouldn't have much to say about it at all, it would be between the two planning boards, it's gonna go to a planning board, or to, to the planning boards as an application. The village board has nothing to do with this process, unfortunately, and as, as the mayor said, it would have been nice if we had some time and room for negotiation with regard to any benefits, just like we did with Caesars. Caesars was a long, drawn-out process, it was a completely, you know, people are saying that it's the same type of project, it's not even apples and oranges, it's like apples and mufflers or something, it's two completely different things. But I do know a couple of the particulars based on what the Senator told me, because I did ask the questions when given the opportunity, and, and I can tell you that what he told me is that it's gonna take one to two years to develop. Well, you know, there's, and also, he said that there's an MOU stipulating the cleanup of the parasite. Well, that, in my opinion, and I believe I speak for the rest of the board members, that site should have been cleaned up years ago, and as far as I'm concerned, our state legislators going back at least a decade, and quite frankly, you would probably know more, have failed with regard to holding the DEC accountable for making that happen. But we all know that the DEC, in my opinion, I'll speak for myself, doesn't do their job the, the way I think they should, and that's evidenced by the fact that, you know, well, I think it was five years ago, and many of you were there, I testified at a DEC hearing, pointing out 19 different technical deficiencies in an application for a neighboring municipality. We never got a response, and it was passed, and that was the end of that. So, so we know that there's something wrong there. But moving on a little bit, Mike talked about the 400 jobs, the distribution of the money that, you know, the impact, the so-called impact aid, you know, we're gonna be getting $135,000, and again, if there's an application, and if it's passed, and once it's operational, that's when this would happen. The Village of Woodbury would get $135,000, the Village of Harriman would get $135,000, the county gets $308,000, and the Town of Woodbury gets $634,000. Now, when I asked about the distribution of this, exactly, that was my response, when I asked about the distribution of this, I was told, because that's how it was written for Monticello in the law, but there was never any time or opportunity for us to participate in any negotiations with this. Now, putting the dollar amounts aside, there's, I always think of these types of projects in terms of revenue and expenses, that would be potential revenue in the form of impact aid, over and above property taxes, but we don't know what the expense side is gonna look like, we have no idea what that's gonna look like. We can make some guesses, but we just don't know. So how can we sit here now and say, oh, that's a great deal, we're gonna get $135,000 a year? Now, I can tell you that if this does happen, and if it fits within the village code, the planning board really wouldn't have too much wiggle room with which to make a decision as to a yea or a nay. If, I mean, you know as well as I do, if it fits within the code, it's, they really can't just stop it. So, where I'm going with this is that if we do ultimately, several years down the road, get $135,000 in terms of impact aid, and I'm still on the village board, I would say that we would absolutely use it to lower taxes, not to add to the resources, in terms of expenditures, but I don't know what the town's gonna do, I don't know, you know, what they will do in terms of lowering taxes with that kind of money, because they're getting a substantial amount more money. And the other thing I'll point out is that $135,000 is about 1.5% of our total budget, so it's not a huge, meaningful number. I also did get some information with regard to proceeds and who gets what, and, and the short version, and I'd be happy to speak with you offline and give you the percentages that I have, I don't want to spend a whole lot more time talking about this, but a lot of that is already, most, and all of it, as a matter of fact, is already written into the existing VLC statute, the VLT statute. So we don't have, again, we don't have any control over that, it was already in the statute, those percentages and everything are just getting transferred down to here based on the state law that was, again, I believe, signed by the governor. You know, if there's other questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I have the answers, but what I will tell, I'll just finish with this, the article in the newspaper, the article in the photo news that evening, and the article in the newspaper the next day, had a lot more information than I have right here, so...
Still many unanswered questions.
Very much so.
I appreciate, you know, your involvement for sure, and anything certainly that you can do, and keep your pulse on things, for sure.
Absolutely.
I know you will, thank you so much.
Thanks.
Well, the involvement is really not, we're not really involved, that's the problem, because I would have told them flat out, don't even insult me with $1.2 million for something like this.
Equates to about 12.5%.
Oh, and by the way, the $1.2 million is also about 1%, maybe a little over 1% of what we were gonna be getting for the Caesars project on an annual basis. Let's keep that in mind, that was close to $10 million a year that we'd be getting, we negotiated on your behalf.
Monticello would be getting more than us, Yonkers Raceway would be getting more than us, I mean, it's really ridiculous that, that the Senator would even, like, dump this on Woodbury. I, I mean, I gotta be honest, there is, I mean, you know, he talked, like I said earlier, he talked, talked about the, the paying the taxes while we all pay our taxes, the cleanup, well, that should have been done. I mean, I don't see any value to this at all, and, and I really think if, if, as the gaming industry is in decline, what's gonna happen if this place starts going down? Well, they're gonna do anything to make a buck. So I really have a lot of problems with this, I really do, and I'm, I just feel it's terrible for Woodbury.
More questions than answers, like you pointed out, Robin. And that's why, you know...
Anybody, anybody else in the second row?
Chris Graziano, Highland Mills.
Pick up, pick up the stand.
No, just the mic out of the hole.
Should take the mic out of the hole.
There you go.
Chris Graziano, Highland Mills. First of all, I'm gonna echo a lot of what Robin said, but I want to thank the village board, because you guys at least have taken a kind of approach of looking, let's get the information, let's do something with it, let's take a look at what's going on before you come out with a ringing endorsement, unlike your counterparts in the town, who not only put his toe in, he jumped in and is shaking all about like he's in the hulky poky over there. It's completely ridiculous that being so far, so, and so for this project. It's a really monumental, bad idea for a lot of different reasons, and I'm gonna go over some of them, you know, jobs are always good, putting growth on the tax roll is always good, but growth, you have to do it in a certain different way. Growth has to be smart, growth has to be befitting of the character of the, of the area it's growing in, and this is neither of those things. This is not taken into account at all whatsoever, a regional approach to growth, because you have things that are going in, and, and applications for hotels and spas and stuff over at Woodbury Commons, you have a property over here that they want to put a video gaming terminal in, why couldn't they have figured out a way to put those things together, and make, and make something that's a destination, rather than something that's a vice? This is not going to be good for the community, I'm 100% against it, I don't know why this is being rushed through, but I want to give you guys a lot of credit for coming out and saying, with, being honest with it, looking for all the information, I'm looking for all the information, too, I'm gonna be doing a lot of research on this, and there's a lot of things at this site, especially with the cleanup, that I'm worried about for people down the line, not even from Woodbury. You know, this site is on the watershed of the Roundpole River.
Oh, yeah.
This site, Roundpole River provides a third of the water for the residents of Rockland County, so I'm gonna be taking a real close look at that, because if you just start disturbing the ground on this site, you could really be doing something terrible down the road to the residents of Rockland County and their water, and I'm not gonna allow that to happen. So, thank you.
Thank you. I mean, when the casinos were coming, Caesars, you know, that was handled a lot better, I mean, I remember when it first started, I got a call and was invited up to the county center on a Saturday morning, and Steve Newhouse is there with some legislators and some other municipal leaders, and they, they started talking about the casino, it turned out, nobody even realized it at the time, that Orange County could get a casino, so, you know, it was kind of enlightening, and, you know, the county exec was asking, how do you guys feel about it? In other words, there was input, and, you know, they had actually a couple of people there from casinos telling us about all the big money we could possibly getting. But one thing I found interesting about that whole process, the host municipalities had to vote on it. In other words, you had to get a majority vote of your board, the town and the Village of Woodbury at the time, for that casino to go in. And I, I don't understand why this is just being slammed down our throats, and I really resent that, I mean, I think it's, you know, it's, it's an attack on home rule, I mean, we're, we're not allowed to have a lot of input into our own destiny, and, I mean, I could go, I'm not gonna go, I could go on for an hour why this is a bad idea, but, you know, I, I won't, so... So anybody else in the second row?
Craig Brady, Highland Mills. I'm gonna say that I have an open mind, not for, not against, I don't particularly see that it fits to what others have said, I don't necessarily think it's a great idea, but my primary concern is the site and the cleanup. To Chris's point, touching this place is a monumentally ridiculous and bad idea, and I've already been doing some research, the data that's out there from the federal EPA site, as well as the New York State DEC, is hysterically out of date, the most recent stuff is from like 2005.
2006, right?
Few and far between, most of it, federal sites '97, you can't even track the people that are involved, and fundamentally, there's, there's just a lot of problems. So what I would encourage the board to do, as a suggestion, would simply be to do the equivalent of a FOIL, to get the deck, to provide you, the board, with every bit of information and every report, especially, they have to do annual, they're supposed to be doing annual samples on the soil and on the water, because they have monitoring wells. I would encourage you to do that, and get that data, and make it publicly available.
Okay.
It's really hot.
It's hot. It's hot. There you go.
Ann McGinnis, Central Valley. Before I get into why this is wrong for all of the people in the lower Orange County, I want to pick a bone with the village board. You did us a disservice by not insisting this become matter of public record, you should have met with the town board on this with more than two people, when you had the opportunity to meet with Scoofus, so it could have become...
We didn't have that opportunity.
You didn't have that opportunity. Never had it.
Well, you should have insisted, you should have tried, because now, we're dealt, this, this has already been pushed through in three days. I have some issues with that. There was three days that we were notified, from the time that this became a thing, to the time that it was shoved through the Senate at the last-ditch effort, and I really feel that if you had given, or had, when given the opportunity, when approached by Mr. Scoofus, and gone to the town board, and requested a quorum been met, having, prior to having discussions about this, then it wouldn't have been shoved through at the last minute.
I was never approached by Mr. Scoofus, by the way, so, well, you know, I mean...
I'm just bringing up, as a matter of fact, you want to do people the right thing, let's stop having unofficial meetings about everything.
You had unofficial meetings?
I'm just gonna leave it at that. With that being said, there's some other things that need to be looked into in regards to the EPA stance on this, the DEC, just to touch on what Craig was on, involved, discussing with the oversight of the wells, where are the samples, where are the, where's the data, we have no, we have no answers to any of these major questions that are being presented at this time. There's some question about, with this, with this, the people that do reside in Rockland County that are using these wells as their primary water source, there's a lot of people that have breast cancer and high rates of cancer in and around these directly affected areas, how do we know that these aren't those problems? How do we know that these didn't cause that? The lack of transparency with this entire project stinks, and it really, it's really disconcerting that of all people, Senator Scoofus is shoving this down our throats. He conveniently moved out of Woodbury. With that being said, I just hope that there's some more oversight, I hope that the town board does the right thing, obviously, they're for this project, but I hope that they will at least discuss more with you guys, so that we can have a whole, entire, involved party on this, because with everybody discussing things separately, we're not serving the entire people. And that's all I have to say.
Annie, I gotta tell you, I don't know how much involvement the town board had in this either, other than the supervisor, because conversation I had with one councilman there, he said they had no conversations about this, and he found out the same way we found out in the newspaper. So this really, this is the town supervisor, Frank Palamo...
I don't believe any of that.
I know, but you know what, they've not commented on social media, they've not commented on the paper, they've gone...
I'm calling spades spades here, I don't believe an inch of that.
Anybody else in the second row?
Hi, Michelle Lindsay from Tuxedo, and, I'm sorry I'm late, but we thought it was at the town hall, we were, we were trying to find out...
That's okay, no problem.
So, you know, I was very involved with the, the fight against the casino in Sterling Forest, and we know people who were very much in protest against Caesars World, so, you know, I just feel that, I just, I almost honestly just can't believe this is happening, that the decision was made up in Albany, that this would go out into Sullivan County, and then it just seemed that these deals were being made with every intention of coming to Harriman area, and just kind of closing down Monticello with the expressed purpose of it's not working, or whatever their reason was. And I feel that we looked at so many things that would impact the surrounding areas when Caesars World and, and the Genting Project was proposed, and felt that, you know, between the Roundpole River, the traffic on Route 17, and I'm sure what you'll, you will have here on... And we know that people do not use the exit, the people in Tuxedo know that a lot of traffic voids the toll by using Route 17 through our town, which is our main street. And, you know, here we are struggling to revitalize our downtown area, and we have 18-wheelers whipping through at 50 miles an hour. And now we're gonna have more traffic, and it just seems that, you know, wasn't the impact on surrounding towns even considered with this? And was any information sent out to neighboring towns?
There was no information, contrary to popular belief by some people. I found out about this like last Wednesday, the first time. And I didn't even find out from our senator. I found out, I think, I think you called me, yeah. So, I mean, he didn't even have the decency to call me. And my understanding was that there were already meetings with the mayor of Harriman and the town supervisor of Woodbury. And, you know, this was done up in Albany, and my other understanding, from what I read in the paper, that this has been going on for months. And again, like I said earlier in this meeting, if this was such a good idea and something that'd be great for the area, why was it such a big secret? This is a dump and run by any terms. So, I mean, I'm not for it. I don't know anybody on this village board that's for it. And I am quite disgusted at the town supervisor and the Senator Scoofus, because I don't understand how he thinks he knows what's good for Woodbury, because he doesn't. So, he should get the roads paved, all the state roads, and leave Woodbury alone.
Right.
So that's my feeling.
Yeah. I mean, and...
No, they, I'm talking about all the state roads. They did this, they're talking, they're gonna pave Route 32 over August. That I know. I'm talking about 9W, I'm talking about all the state roads. I mean, it's treacherous driving around here. It's ridiculous.
Yeah, we have, I hear you, because we have that problem down in Tuxedo, we can't...
I know.
You can't walk on the sidewalk without an 18-wheeler being six inches away.
I mean, my suggestion is, everybody should be writing their senator.
Right.
Senator Scoofus, and letting him know how unhappy you are with this decision.
Okay.
He thinks it's a great idea.
I'd like to know, and also, I mean, the history of these companies shows that, you know, this is just the tip of the iceberg. They get this in, they get this approved, and then it's, what's next? You know, I'm sure the gaming commission will, you know, control what they could do, but, you know, I, it's, it's hard to trust what's going on.
Thank you.
Michelle, you said something a minute ago about Route 17 being your main street in Tuxedo. Route 32 is our main street here as well.
Right.
Especially in Highland Mills and in Central Valley. We have the same problem, the same exact issues that you have, we have the same issues.
Right.
So, we're very sensitive to that issue.
Yeah. It's huge. It's huge for us. So, as it is for you, so hopefully they'll consider that.
You know, and I hope you go to town board meetings and Village of Harriman Board meetings as well and talk about this, because...
We will.
Yeah, good.
Anybody else in the second row? Anybody in the third row?
I said it'd be easier if you weren't depending on...
Yeah, the town board meeting, for those who wanna go and talk to the town supervisor, is conveniently scheduled for 10:00 a.m. on July 3rd.
Well, unless it's on the agenda, you can't speak about it, can you?
What's that?
Unless it's on the town board agenda, you're not able to speak about it, is that correct?
Is it not on the town board agenda?
I don't know, we'll have to see.
You can speak, okay, they changed that.
Oh, they changed that. Susan Cirriello, Woodbury. I would like to know if you were provided, or know of the existence of any analysis that shows that this venture in Woodbury will be successful.
No.
We have a company that's right now losing 12.5 million a month.
Yeah.
And by putting those VLTs here, we are going to save them, so I'm just curious...
And not only that, they have to pay out Yonkers Raceway, they have to pay out Monticello, and then whatever's left, I guess, is what is part of Woodbury and Harriman.
Well, there's percentages, and then there's the impact of money that we'd be allegedly getting.
And also with regards to the municipal services, the village getting $135,000, did anybody consider that our volunteer fire department is having issues getting volunteers? So now we're gonna add that on top of it? Will we be able to sustain that?
Well, like I said earlier, you know, we know what the impact aid would be...
Will we have to go to paid firefighters? But $135,000 is never gonna, I mean, obviously never gonna cover that.
For, like I said earlier, we know what the impact aid would be, but we have no idea what the expenses would be.
Right.
And to answer your other question with regard to, I'm sorry, the first question was, do we know...
Were you provided any analysis, or do you know of any analysis that exists that shows that this is going to, because, you know, the concern here is that it will be, not as, it will fail.
The only analysis I saw in the paper, both a few months ago with regard to the mini casino and right after session ended the next day, was how much money they were losing. So I don't know how they can infer, they be in the state legislature, they be in, not Caesar's World, Resorts World, or anybody can say how much revenue is gonna be generated down here. So, you know, is there some clause in the Assembly and Senate bills that were passed and signed into law that say, "Well, if they don't meet a certain threshold of revenue, we don't have to pay the impact aid"? I mean, there's so many things we don't know.
And, you know, what happens if it's not successful? Then we have what?
A vacant building.
Another vacant building, right?
Or even worse, it could be a rundown casino.
Right. And it seems to, you know, does this serve the people of Woodbury, Harriman, even Orange County?
No.
No, I mean, only potentially in my head it serves the clientele you have coming into possibly the Woodbury Commons. Maybe, you know, with the expansion in the hotels, maybe it's a great way for, you know, some of the husbands to go down and, you know, have something to do while their wives shop. But it, I mean, locally, I mean, I can't see how many of us locally are gonna be running down to a VLT to have a night out.
I have my doubts even on the, what do you call it, employee numbers. They're talking about 400 employees. To get to that number, I mean, I'm having a hard time getting to that number anyway, but it has to be a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-week operation. And once again, I have to say, do we really need that in Woodbury? Do I need something that's 24 hours a day that's a gambling den? Because that's, calling it a racino, I think is kind of an insult to racinos. This is more like a gaming parlor, at best.
It's like a video arcade, you know, for kids, except you can win money.
Except we don't get to play Space Invaders or Pac-Man.
I would be interested to see how they think putting that here is going to turn around an operation that's losing 12 and a half million a month.
I'd be interested to see it, but I still don't think I'd believe it.
And I don't even, I doubt it even exists at this point. I don't, it just seems very suspect that...
Well, $150,000, let's say, to Harriman and the Village of Woodbury, I mean, that's not gonna cover expenses. So we're gonna be subsidizing this right off the bat. I don't understand why the town gets 650,000, whatever they get, because in reality, I don't understand why Wellie isn't jumping up and down wanting more money, because he's gonna be the primary contact. So, I mean, there's a lot of things about this I don't understand. But of course, I was not included in this to ask the questions. I think I was purposely left out, so, but that's all right.
Understood.
And keep in mind the land distribution there. Craig did a good analysis, and he had posted it online.
I saw that, yeah.
But my understanding is it's about 60/40 Harriman and Woodbury.
Right.
So, you know, they're gonna be the lead agency if and when, if and when an application is brought before planning boards.
Well, it could be, depending on the configuration of the property...
Where on the property it's gonna be, we don't know anymore.
So, I mean, it could be a joint review.
Deal, and it's just gonna happen?
So, the state...
I mean, I know it has to go in front of the planning boards.
Well, but putting that aside, the state legislature passed this, and honestly, it reminds me of how the SAFE Act was done. The state legislature passed bills in both the House, both the senate and the assembly. And it's my understanding that the governor signed it. I looked earlier tonight, and it looked like he did. So, yeah, as far as that's concerned, that's a done deal. So then the next part of the process would be an application will go before the planning board, and as I said earlier, in response to somebody's question, I don't remember who, oh, Robin. If it fits within the village code, then all the planning board can do is dot the i's and cross the t's, and that's oversimplifying it, but it would have to fit within the code.
Well, the code was actually part of legislation.
Well, that's true too. There is state legislation that supersedes the village code with regard to that in some cases. But, you know, the village board did not make a decision on this, we didn't have a meeting about this. You know, this is not...
We were not consulted at all.
Thank you.
And for the record, I think the Village of Woodbury's board is against this application. And I hope if it does go as far as the planning board, that they are very diligent in the SECA process, because there's a lot of questions even about the contamination down there.
Well, that's a piece of my question. I'm Sue Scher, I live in Tuxedo.
How do you spell your last name?
S-C-H-E-R. I did call my senator and gave her hell, because we weren't consulted, and we spent a lot of time supporting her and working for her. And she said, Scoofus said it was a done deal. Everybody in the town loved it. Anyway, I have a couple of concerns. I don't, I am concerned about the people who are going to be cleaning this up, and their ability to do the job, and the DEC to oversee the cleanup of that site. And especially their cleaning it up while kids are across the street in school. You know, half the kids in Tuxedo go to the Monroe Woodbury School, so we have that concern too, about what it means for the racino being there, but the cleanup happening there. I'm also, I've been very involved with the Ramapo River and the people looking and paying attention to the Ramapo River. And it's my understanding that the Ramapo River runs through parts of that site. I don't know how much they're going to be using, and of the site for the whole thing, and how it will all impact either the racino itself or the cleanup. That has to be a very major cleanup. And I, our experiences with the DEC is their oversight sometimes leads something to...
I think you're being very kind.
What?
I think you're being very kind.
So, and if it is the casino people who are going to be involved with overseeing that cleanup, then that...
We don't even know who the owner, I don't even know any of that information.
No, we don't know who the owner is.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Don't speak, let's not...
Who's, we don't know who is building this in the first place. We have no, the investors. Exactly, we have no clue.
What I can tell you is that it would, based on my personal experience in dealing with environmental cleanups, it would not be the contractors that would be doing the construction. They would have to hire a special environmental firm that does nothing but environmental cleanups. But this is going to be one of those really big projects that nobody's ever seen before, in my opinion. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what's there, but...
And how long will that take? How long is that gonna take to clean up?
I don't know. I don't know what that anybody does, and that's the other thing. I don't know that anybody could actually say, "Hey, this is a good idea from an investment perspective." Because how could they possibly know, without doing an environmental study, how much it's gonna cost to clean up? It could cost a million dollars, it could cost $100 million. I have no way of knowing that, but, you know...
And do we know who the lead agency is going to be?
What agency, what do you mean?
Probably Harriman, Village of Harriman. Probably at this juncture, I'd guess the Village of Harriman would be lead agency. But then, but then again, you know, the way this was pushed through, who knows? It may be rubber stamped already with the DEC coming from the governor's desk, or, you know, the state senate. I mean, there's a lot of questions here. This stinks right to the core, let me tell you, this whole process.
So I think there's a whole lot of issues that, and I don't know, and this is to people here, who are the people in town who are starting to organize? Is there a committee of people who are working on it? Okay. Get our names on you. Because I was one of the people who was, spent a year of my life fighting the casino in Tuxedo, so I don't wanna see, I wanna see, you know, who are the people that the people in Tuxedo can work with. Thank you.
Anybody else in the second row? Oh, third row, I'm sorry. Well, there's nobody in the first row, so technically, by default, you're the second row. Third row's over there.
Dennis McCabe from Highland Mills. I was just wondering, I know you guys got it thrown down your throat, we have it thrown down our throat, whatever. Has anybody ever talked to Albany and said, "Okay, we have two casinos in Sullivan County, the one is closed at the racetrack, and the other one's in the red, I go there once in a while, okay"? Has anybody said, "Why don't we use the other casino that's closed at the racetrack, instead of going through all this aggravation for us down here"?
Guys, guys, guys.
Is that what it is? Oh, I thought they just closed, the other one was five minutes late.
They're not making any money on the machines up there.
The conversation I had with the state senator about this is, I felt like when you build a casino, racino, gaming parlor, whatever you wanna call it, is you're trying to boost an economy that is struggling, okay? I felt, why isn't this going to Newburgh? Why isn't this maybe going to New Windsor, where you need the jobs and you need the economic development? I don't feel like we need that here.
Absolutely not.
All right, we've got the Woodbury Commons, the Woodbury Commons is expanding, we've got other projects on the board that are of more of a higher-end quality. That's not, the state senator's response to me was, that's not where the investors wanna go. They don't wanna go to Newburgh. They wanna come here. That's right off the thruway, that's got the train station here and everything else.
One woman said, "Right, they come up here, they go to Woodbury Commons, the husband will say, 'Okay, I'm gonna go over to the gambling tables for a while'".
Yeah, I'm not sure about that. I don't, I don't know if a lot of those people are gonna wanna go to this place. It's really, I mean, I don't know how, like, you could put lipstick on a pig, but at the end of the day, you still got a pig. I mean, it's not really, it's a glorified OTB.
It is.
I mean, if it's anything like the one up in Monticello, which I went to once, never went back a second time, because I didn't find it to be, you know, entertaining in a sense, that, you know, so, the thing that annoys me too is that they're looking for us to bail out, you know, World Resorts. I mean, they're losing money up there like, you know, they're bleeding money, and they're trying to salvage that, you know, and I think there's a lot of politics involved in this. I mean, I can't say, I don't know any of the details, but I think this favors cut here. And they're moving it to Woodbury for one reason, one reason only, because they feel it can make money here. It's not to help Woodbury, it's not. So, I mean, this is being done for all the wrong reasons.
Well, what can stop this? I know you said the planning board. Can the planning board stop it for some technical reasons?
Well, it could, it can give it a rough time going through, but I mean, SECA is really not designed to stop a project, it's really designed to mitigate the environmental impact. I mean, they already have an environmental impact down there already. What they need to do is clean that up, and that's questionable too, by what I read in the paper. I mean, there were statements made where relocating the contaminant on the property, well, to me, that's not a cleanup, you know? They're just finding the cheapest way out to get up a business running and trying to make money. I mean, when that's all built out down there, which will probably be over the next few years with a couple hotels and the starting of the transit village, that land's gonna be the only available piece down there. So guess what? Somebody's gonna come along and go, "Hey, that's the only place." So they clean it up, and they put something there. I don't know what they put there, but I mean, as I said earlier, I don't know if you were here at the time, I'd like to see something like a soundstage. You know, that, to me, would be a desirable business in the area, where you would have, you know, TV shows made, or movies made, or things like that, where, you know, there would be good jobs, and it would be something you could be proud of, you know? I just think this is, this is just a real bad idea.
Agree with you 110%.
I think the only way to stop this, the best way to stop this project, is to go to the town supervisor. He has been all over social media, he has been all over the newspapers, singing this project's praises. And the only thing that the town supervisor understands is votes. That's it. So you have to, it has to become an issue for people in Woodbury. It has to be that you take your speech to his domain, so to speak, take it to town hall, say, speak your piece there. Go to town hall itself, see him off-hours, he's the full-time supervisor, so I'm sure he's got... is votes. That's it. So you have to, it has to become an issue for people in Woodbury. It has to be that you take your, your, your speech to his domain, so to speak. Take it to town hall. Say, speak your piece there. Go to town hall itself. See him off hours, he's the full-time supervisor, so I'm sure he's got office hours at some point. But it needs to be known that we are not in favor of this project. You have to let the town supervisor know, okay? He is, in my opinion, spearheading this, because he gets 50% of the revenue. 50% of the revenue there is the town of Woodbury's. Yes, that's it, thank you. He, we were not consulting in this. He seems to have been part of this since day one, okay? So he was the first, when this article first came out in the photo news is when I heard about it. We knew nothing about it, okay? That was, it was the mid-April issue of the photo news, so we were not consulted. We were not told anything about this. And quite honestly, whatever the meetings they had, I think we, maybe a conference call, and that was it. So you want this, to fight this, this has to go old school. It has to be letter writing, it has to be social media, which is new school.
See, I'm just wondering, though, I mean, you go to the town supervisor, you go to the town board, you say, we don't want it, and the town board says, you're right, we don't want it either.
They can't do nothing about it.
Can't do anything.
Because Albany lies village, it's stable.
Well, what I, I think happened, and I don't know, I think Senator Scoofus called Frank and asked him, and Frank probably said, yeah, it sounds like a great idea. I mean, that's the only thing I could think of. I can't, for any other reason-
I can't even imagine, with the 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week potential, not even traffic, but what you have potentially going to this, the strain, it's gonna be on the police department in the first place.
Yes, right.
Right, I mean, we know what it's gonna be for our departments.
Fire department, sanitation.
Absolutely. EMS, our ambulance corps, it's gonna be the same thing.
Okay, had the same at least.
No, that's, that's okay. Anybody else in the, in the second or third row? Anybody in that row? Neil? You gonna go to snack?
Neil Kraus, Highland Mills. This seemed, having gone through the casino situation and this situation, is so different. It is 95% of the people in Woodbury, that at the time I was on the board, I spoke, I spoke to almost 500 people, either at their homes or through petitions and stuff like that, and 95% of the people agreed that the casino was a good idea. But that was a long, long process. They met with, they met with the board individually, and the board, they had a public hearing explaining it to the public, and this just seemed to have dropped in our laps. And I, and I urge people to look at the U2 thing of this meeting. Because some people did arrive late, and they didn't get the full benefit, I think, of Mike, your explanation of how it basically didn't happen for, for the village and stuff. And I, I just, I haven't heard maybe one person or a few people in, in, in Woodbury who are in favor of this, and apparently our neighbors to the south in Tuxedo are cer, are not in favor of this, and stuff like that. So I'm opposed to it for the reason that there is no process so far. There hasn't been a process. And the other thing I want to, is with the cleanup down there, we went to, I went to the EPA public hearings on the cleanup, the DEC, the EPA said $21 million is what the company that had bought from Rutherford had to pay, and that was a company out of St. Louis that specialized in brownfield cleanups. I don't know if, it's not, it doesn't seem to be the same name of the company that owns it now, but it is a company in St. Louis. So unless St. Louis has the, the market on brownfield cleanup companies, and they're just lining up in St. Louis down the street, it may be the same company that it was back in 2007, where the EPA told them, you had to put up $21 million in escrow before you could take a teaspoon of dirt out of there, because they, because that soil was so toxic down there. And who's going to get it? When it flows, it's going to flow south, it's gonna go, CJ, it's gonna go down to Rockland and down through there. So they, they should, Tuxedo is here, but it should eventually be people in Rockland, or in Rockland County who are yelling at their state senators and others, and telling them how unhappy they are up with the, the action that was taken up in Albany. Because it's not just one senator, and I am very disappointed in Senator Scoofus, that kinda seemed to have pushed this through, but there are, are other senators in the state, and they represent local, other, other areas. There shouldn't be all, there's, there are representatives up in Albany and say, telling them, asking them, what are you doing? Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, a good place maybe to put it would be up at Stewart. They got plenty of acres up there. Anybody else? Well, I don't know if that's a good idea.
It's probably not a good idea. Ann McGinnis, Central Valley. As I'm sitting here thinking, and I'm, I'm thinking about some other points, the, this property, this Napera property, sits in a tail end of what is proposed to become the new village of Seven Springs. With the history of certain people annexing land, what is the potential for probability that this, too, could become an annexed piece of land? Especially if it's not making money, and-
Doesn't matter.
-it is seen as like a tax-
If the owner of the land-
-incentive for a certain community, let's say.
If the owner of the land is interested in having the land annexed, of course, I don't, it has to be adjacent to the property, so, you know-
Well, it would be in this case, because it's, that property goes through Harriman.
I know, but the land, it's being, the, the proposal for, was it Seven, Seven Springs, the village of Seven Springs isn't adjacent to this property. For them to annex it, they would have to annex all the property between their borders and that property. So that'd be quite an undertaking, but it could be-
We're only talking about, like, a couple acres here, right?
No. They, they would be, they would take in the Mercedes dealership, the BMW dealership, they would have to, Walmart, Home Depot. Well, the owners of that land would have to agree to the annexation. Now, if they do agree to the annexation, yes, it's possible.
Okay, that's, that's all I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Anybody else? One thing I'll say is, we'll try to do, the Village of Woodbury, we'll try to amass some data on Napera property and see what we could find out. Probably put one of our law firms on that to try to track down what information and, you know, any kind of, you know, liens, litigation, or anything involved in the property. So maybe we can find out something that might be, you know, make them reconsider putting it there. I'm not sure what the legislation said, that it had to be there. I thought it was in Orange County. So, I mean, I, I think there are other locations in Orange County where it might, excuse me? Don't do that, then. There might be other locations in Orange County where it, it might be more suited, you know. So I don't think down there, I mean, like, as some of my trustees have mentioned, you know, we're looking, trying to bring in high-end hotels into the area across from Coles, and, you know, we, we, we're looking for businesses that are, you know, that we can, I mean, lack of a better term, kinda be proud of or happy to see in our community. We're not looking for businesses that might attract, you know-
Riffraff.
That's, that's a nice, thank, thank you, Andrew. Thanks for helping me out with that. But anyway, that's, that's kinda where we are. So I think if everybody's finished talking, I'm gonna ask the board members if they have anything. Everybody back there? Anybody wanna say anything before we wrap up? Nobody? Okay, Andrew?
Well, just wanna thank, since they're here in attendance, we were invited once again to the Highland Lake Estates kickoff, their summer, summer barbecue. And once again, it's a great time for me and my wife. So I wanna thank you guys for having us once again. Thank you, you've been wonderful. And that's all I have, Mr. Aaron.
Okay, thank you.
I attended as well, and I did appreciate the invite, and had a great time, talked to a lot of great people, and had some great food. Thanks, Chris, that was pretty awesome stuff. And, you know, I had intended to say my piece with regard to this parasite, but I think I said a little bit about that, so let's move on.
Ted?
I like mac and cheese, I'm just saying. It looked pretty good on Facebook, so if you wanna bring some by town hall one day, I'm not gonna object.
Okay.
It looked good.
It was good.
I'm a mac and cheese freak.
I also attended the Highland Lake Estates kickoff picnic. I had a cheeseburger, it was delicious. I'm not supposed to eat them, but it was, it was delicious, but anyway. I just wanna make a few points here before we wrap up. School is out, and that means people are out and about enjoying the summer weather. So please be careful driving and stay alert. Remember, the village's speed limit is 30 miles an hour unless otherwise posted. Also, reminder that most village roads are 30 feet wide, so when parking on village roads, please refrain from parking on or near the crest of a hill. This limits sight distance of oncoming traffic and creates potentially dangerous situations for drivers adjusting their driving lanes to avoid your parked car. In addition to this safety tip, you also may want to refrain from parking across from an intersection, because this also affects driving lanes as people are coming by and turning and stuff, because park a little bit further north or south of the intersection would be better, and don't park on the crest. Also, I wanna make a point, somebody asked me to make this point, so I'm gonna do it. Please remember to not leave children or pets in hot cars without proper ventilation. My advice is, don't leave them in cars. We, we're in the warm weather now, and it gets very hot in those cars very quickly. Other than that, I wanna wish everybody a great and safe Fourth of July weekend.
I know, I'm sorry. I have something else. Well, I figured this is gonna be like a top-five YouTube watch meeting, so I thought that I would remind everybody that the Woodbury Chamber of Commerce is hosting a community event on July 19th. It's a murder mystery dinner at the Falkirk. It's $50 per person, includes dinner and mayhem. I believe there will be at least one or two people murdered at that event. Solve the murder, you get to win a little prize. Information, you can either go on the Chamber's website, Facebook page, I'm sure someone on this panel will reshare it on the village's Facebook page, or stop by town hall, and I can get you more information that way. So hopefully, we've been selling pretty good, which is, I'm happy about, so hopefully we sell a little bit more. And I don't know if I mentioned this here yet or not, but the farmer's market will sadly not be coming this year. We did not get enough vendors, but we are working for next year instead.
You done?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, as I was saying when I was rudely interrupted, have a great Fourth of July weekend. With that, I'm gonna ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you and good night.